When you mouse over, it's sort of like center, like center down the bottom, there's a button that says chat. If you hit that, it'll open up a panel on the right. And that's a group Zoom group chat for the room. And don't see the file in there, I'll share it again. Yeah. And I think you should be able to download it from chat and open it up.
No, I don't see anything. I can view it from the box. I'll just have to go away, open up another screen on my phone. But I have just a still picture anyway, so it won't really matter.
Okay.
It's a nice still picture.
Thank you.
Another thing, I'm not feeling very well. So I may have to step away from the meeting. And Mr. Paul may have to, if he's in the meeting, he may have to assume I will.
He doesn't have a view. He's, that's his fixed picture. And he's participated by audio. Could you please mute your volume? Ted, speaking of not feeling well, just so you're aware, Councilwoman Drysbach called me a little while ago to let me know that she is under the weather and may not be able to join us for the meeting unless she gets back from a doctor's appointment timely.
Okay. Yeah, there's something definitely going on. I didn't feel well towards the end of work today, and I got home and, yeah, it's gotten really bad. I'm not running a fever, but I'm just not feeling very well. It's more stomach than anything. Not that everybody wants to know that, but, you know.
They all do now.
What?
But they all do now.
Yes, they do. The entire, entire council or whatever public.
Scott, hello, everybody?
Are we waiting for anybody else?
Uh, Councilwoman Sherlock was having some technical difficulty, but it looks like she's trying to join us.
I'm here on my phone, but I would rather have been on my computer.
I did forward it to you again, Nancy, at the other email address, if you want to try it again.
Let's see if it pops up. I don't see it yet. But thank you. So for now, it'll just be where I am.
Just bear with me one minute while I see if I can get my computer to actually work. All right, I'm ready if everybody else is ready. All right, let me start the recording here.
John, you ready? Terry, you good?
Uh, yeah, recording has started, as streaming has started. So I'm gonna disappear, but let me know if you need anything.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, if everyone's ready, I'm gonna call to order the Borough of Morrisville Borough Council meeting for Monday, September 21st, 2020. Can we have a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance? And all those able, please stand. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Ravella?
Mayor Ravella?
Councilman Bauer?
Here.
Councilwoman Drysbach?
Here.
Councilwoman Halaho?
Here.
Councilman Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
Councilman Jaeger?
Here.
Our borough solicitor is here, and our borough manager. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Virginia.
Yeah, Mr. President, if it wasn't on the record earlier, let me just state that Councilwoman Drysbach called earlier. She's ill. She's gonna miss the meeting. And do you want me to do the executive session announcement?
Yes, please.
We will have a brief executive session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting for legal and personnel matters.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Four is announcements and presentations. Four A is the Bucks County Transportation Management Agency and Charge Point Electric Vehicle Charging Stations.
Yes. Steve, if you and Ray wanna take to the podium, I'm gonna try to readjust this here so that...
Well, not a problem. I'll do the introduction and then Ray will get the bulk of the conversation. He's the one that I'm sure you're gonna have most of the questions for. But good evening. My name is Steve Knoll. If you don't know me, I am the Executive Director of TMA Bucks. We are the Transportation Management Association, serving Bucks County.
Steve, might need to pull that mic and just hold it a little closer.
I can do that. Maybe. Is this better? Nope.
Much better.
Much better. Again, I'll start over. My name is Steve Knoll. I'm the Executive Director of TMA Bucks. We are the Transportation Management Association, serving all of Bucks County. And first and foremost, I thank the Borough of Morrisville. You've been members of the TMA for quite a long time. And you're actually among my favorite municipalities to work with as far as various projects are concerned over the years. This is another opportunity. What we have tonight, and as I understand, is there's discussion about the possibility of installing electric vehicle charging stations at various locations in the borough. And there's an opportunity, if you recall several years ago, there was a settlement involving diesel emissions cheating, involving Volkswagen. And there was multi-million dollar settlement, considerable funding of which came to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in turn, is distributing those funds in the form of grants known as Driving PA Forward. That's the name of the program. And there is a number of different alternative fuel programs in that grant, including EV2, and you'll find out more about the EV2, um, charging stations. Now, the opportunity with this grant is pretty significant. You can get up to, if the unit is installed on government-owned land, and if the unit is, if it's installed on government-owned land and it's fully accessible to the public, which I believe is 80 hours per week minimum, then you can qualify for up to $4,500 rebate per plug. So a two-plug unit, $9,000, or 90% of the cost, whichever is lower. But I can say that $4,500 goes quite a long way per plug toward installation of one of these units. This is free money unlike any grant program that I've seen in 20 years of working in transportation management associations. There's no match required. And I don't think you've seen, I've never seen a program like this before where they give you money, you spend it on infrastructure, and the only requirement is some reporting. I don't think you'll see a program like this again. Supposedly a five-year round. It's first come, first served. So when, it's five years or whenever they're out of money, whichever's first. Right now, there is money. I imagine, I've not given any indication that they're gonna be running out of money anytime soon. The TMA's role, if you decide to move ahead with an electric vehicle charging station program, the TMA's role in this is administrative. As members of the TMA, you are entitled to us handling all of the grant applications, report submissions, fiscal management and the like, so that your staff doesn't have to handle that. It's one of the many benefits of membership. That is what we would do. But the important question is, what are these stations? How do they work? And to discuss that, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Ray Delfing from National E Solutions to talk a little more about the actual units that you would be considering installing.
And by the way, if I can add, Ray lives here in Morrisville.
I do.
So if anything goes wrong, we'll be knocking on his door.
And I'm right down the road. So you know where to find me. So thank you very much for having me today. Like you introduced, my name's Ray Delfing. I'm with National E Solutions. We are a local electrical company out of Fallsington. Initially, the company started in LED lighting. We saw great benefits for the LED savings. A few years down the road, charging stations became available. And that was another avenue that we saw was great for our business. We are helping companies save money inside their buildings, on the outside parking lot, and adding an electric vehicles charging station was just another level to that, to showing that the companies and townships and boroughs wanna promote this efficiency through lighting or electric vehicles. So a little bit about the Charge Point stations. So Charge Point is the largest EV charging stations that are out there right now. There are a couple competitors. Probably the biggest one that you'll see next to Charge Point is Tesla. The issue with Tesla's stations is that they only really work for the Tesla vehicles. Charge Point made sure when they made their stations that they work with all electric vehicles, including Teslas. So this makes it easy for the drivers to be able to use them. It lets you guys know, you know, as the station owners, that everybody's gonna be able to access your stations. You're not gonna have issues with anybody coming up and saying, well, since I got this here car, that means I can't use your station. That's never an issue for Charge Point. Their plugs work for all the vehicles. So the station that we would be looking at proposing for you guys is the CT4000. I'm not sure, I sent some stuff to Scott. Like I said, I didn't wanna bring any hands out tonight, but I'll be happy to provide you more information about the individual station itself, cut sheets, things of that matter, of what's required for the electric side. But the station we're looking at is the CT4000. This is a two-plug station. So like we spoke about before, that's $4,500 per plug. So this would be $9,000 for the single station through the grant money. So that two-plug station is great. You put it in between two spots. It allows two vehicles simultaneously to charge, use the station, and be able to use that along the way. The station doesn't require much from the borough. Once the station's installed, Charge Point pretty much manages everything else. That goes from on the internal side of keeping track of the electrical usage and just making sure your station's up and running. You'll actually have an online portal that you're able to access all of that information, and we'll be able to give the correct people notification if there was some sort of issue. That could be the station maybe was hit by a vehicle and is not operational, or as simple as maybe there is a power outage and one of the surge protectors flipped. So then now there's no power at the station. But all that will be given to you, so it won't have to be, okay, we have to have somebody come check this weekly, or you find out two months down the road from people complaining that it hasn't been working, because this will all be readily available for you to check 24/7/365. You guys will be able to go onto your online portal and say, my station's running. It's currently being used. It's currently not being used. So that's a little bit about kind of your internal side of it. You'll be, like I said, you'll be able to see all the usage reports. So that's as in-depth as you'd like to go. You can pull reports to see how long people are typically using the station, how much energy each vehicle is using, as well as be able to track patterns to see, okay, well, we have people typically coming nine to five, and then it looks like there's somebody coming at 10:00 AM every day. So you'll be able to see all of that easily through the online portal and be able to give different access to people in the borough who may need to be able to see individual pieces of that. From Charge Point handling, the user side of it, again, kind of keeping the issues out of your hand. Charge Point handles all of the customer issues. So if a customer comes up to the station and they're trying to use the plug and it's not working, they won't call you. They won't come running into the borough office. They know to directly call Charge Point, the app that themselves refers them to that. There's phone numbers on the stations, all to keep it out of your hands to make it easier so they can quickly resolve the issue if there happens to be one. And this could be as simple as they forgot to attach their credit card or forgot to finish signing up their Charge Point account, all things that you guys won't have to worry about. Another benefit of the Charge Point stations is you are able to charge a monetary amount for the charging of the vehicles. This can, again, be done through the online portal and can be changed as frequently or put to an amount of whatever you guys want. Typically, Charge Point recommends somewhere in the dollar range, and that's just to offset the electrical costs of the station. But we have seen some boroughs, townships do it for free. We've seen some commercial places do it for free as well to try to promote the EV driving and to try to pull in traffic into their area. That's another great benefit about the EV charging stations is the application itself on your phone will show you where these stations are. So as drivers are passing through the area, they'll be able to look and see, oh, there's a spot available in Morrisville. Let me stop there. Let me grab some lunch while I'm here. Get back in my car and continuing heading up to New York. So it makes it very easy for the drivers to be able to locate your stations. It shows them pictures of exactly where the station is and can even quickly get to their maps to pull them off to that, just like they would a gas station. So National E Solutions, that's the Charge Point side of it. So where National E Solutions comes in, we are a certified reseller and installer. So we're able to assist you from purchasing the unit all the way up to installing and doing everything on the installation side. We can run electrical as well as be able to do all the concrete work. So essentially, we would, from start to finish, be able to handle the project. Once your station's up and running, you know, we would coordinate with TMA, make sure everything's set there to put in your final rebate, and then you guys would be set. That point, are there any questions?
Just a couple things, a couple things I realized I should have mentioned as well, just to see your point. There are several municipalities throughout Bucks County that have either installed these stations or are close to installing these stations. Most recently, your neighbors in Middletown Township put in two units. We worked with them administratively on the program, and those units are both online, one at the Township building and one at their Public Works building on Veterans Highway. They are charging 18 cents a kilowatt hour. Middletown decided they wanted to cover their costs, but at the same time, not profit off anyone who was going to be using those units. In Richland Township to the north, they've also installed units, again, one at the police, one at their police public works facility and the other at the Township building. Richland Township opted to make them free, at least for a certain period of time, because despite their use, the amount of electricity they determined was negligible for their budget. So in that case, it's free. There are options as far as how you can do that, and there are numerous municipalities, as I mentioned. Let's see, West Rock Hill is in the process of looking at them now. The Borough of Quakertown is looking at them now, and also Ben Salem Township. So you are not by any means the first municipality that's either expressed an interest or been approached about these units.
Could one of you, probably Ray, speak to the insurance program?
Yeah. So with the stations, they call it the Charge Point Assure Program. The Assure Programs is head-to-toe full coverage of the unit. This includes probably some of the most well-known ones are being hit by plows or backed into. This is all covered by Charge Point under this Assure Program, as well as any electrical issues. If anything, you know, small is to break, there's a lot of, you know, small plastic clips. We actually just did a project out in Efford. While we were doing the project, we noticed in shipment, there was a little piece cracked. Within the next week, Charge Point had the piece out there, and it was fixed and good as new. So the Assure Program really is a great coverage program to make you know you don't have to worry about that station. You don't have to worry about poor drivers, unfortunately, just ruining something that's supposed to be great, or any accidents, you know, whether it be an electrical strike through a storm or anything like that, the station is fully covered. Yeah, vandalism, another one. They pretty much take care of the station for you to make sure it's 100% and running.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, the Middletown's charging 18 cents a kilowatt hour? What is the, what, now that's the price that they set for their charge. What is it costing them? Like, if they didn't charge 18 cents a kilowatt hour, what is, what do they pay? What is it, around 11, 12?
That sounds about right, but admittedly, they figured that out on their own after the stations were established and set up. I never really asked them the reasoning behind them, or it was simply printed in a news article. They ultimately decided on 18 cents.
Okay.
That was what they figured that would cover their costs and not result in any kind of profit. They didn't want to profit off any residents or visitors who may use it.
Okay. How robust, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, is this CT4000, say, compared to the Tesla Supercharger 2?
So there's technically three versions of EV chargers, right? There's your Level One. Your Level One is your home charger. That typically is a little block. It charges as quick as your phone charges.
12 hours.
Right, right. There's a Level Two, so that's what the CT4000 is. That station, it's about maybe five, six feet tall, maybe half the width of me. So it's a pretty small station. It fits right in between, since it is a two-plug, it fits right in between two parking spaces. So essentially, that little bit of space that's there is taken up, but it's in no way impeding the sidewalk.
My question is, the person that you referenced before, just say the person that's on their way to New York City, and if they have to charge up, and they say, oh, Marshall has one, I'll stop in Marshall, how long will they be stopped in Marshall for it to charge up to make it up to New York City?
So what Charge Point is seeing is most people are the fuel equivalent of topping off when they're out. They're out at Jimmy's baseball game, and there's a charger there. They just came from home, maybe from work. They're still at half a charge, but they figured, I'm here, let me just charge up a little bit so I know that we can stop ice cream and make it home. So for the most part, people are using these stations an hour to two hours. I believe on most vehicles, it's changing because the battery sizes are changing, but I believe it takes six to eight hours to fully charge most of the vehicles. But again, Charge Point has been taking all the data that's seen, and they're saying everybody is really just spending an hour, two hours, just topping off at these stations.
And it would have to be put on government property?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, nothing against government property, but I don't know anything about Middletown. But, I mean, I hear you could, if you parked here, you could, there's places on Bridge Street, you go grab a bite to eat. But like, if we put one in our Public Works building, I don't think there's many people that are gonna...
Whoa, I believe this year, they actually...
We were talking about the municipal parking lot behind the Stockham Building and the parking lot at Williamson Park. As the two locations.
As long as it's accessible. It's still 45.
Now, is there anything built into the Charge Point that would...
Yeah. So just to clarify real quick, if it was put on non-government property, the way the rebate's done this year is the 4,500 amount is still the cap. The thing that changes is the maximum total percent, which is 70%. But honestly, from what we've seen, you're gonna be at that, with the installation, you're gonna be at the 4,500 mark anyway. So if you were to find a place that you wanted to do it off government property, that shouldn't affect your rebate amount.
Is there anything built into it that'll report or that it'll shut off after a while? Let's say somebody says, you know what, I'm just gonna charge it overnight and park it here and hop the machine and no one else can use it. How do you prevent that?
So a lot of townships to prevent that have been doing, we've seen a couple things. To prevent overnight charging, you actually can turn off the station throughout the night. You just have to make sure that you're meeting the required open hours for the rebate, which I said was 80 hours.
80 hours.
So it's really not that much. So if you wanted it to be off at 7, 8 o'clock, you know, at dusk and not come back on until dawn, that should still fit in the parameters. Other things that we've seen to stop people from hogging it is an increase in price after the first two, three, four hours. So you say, okay, well, we're gonna do, let's use the Middletown. We're gonna do 18 cents for our first three hours. After that, it's $2. The hour after, that's $5, and then it's 20. And that starts to deter people from sitting there all day. But I gotta say, honestly, most people are very courteous about this. The main issue in electric vehicles right now is the lack of charging stations, right? People are concerned that they're gonna get out somewhere and they're not gonna be able to get back. So because of that, people are very courteous of making sure that they're not taking the stations longer than they should. Not to say that those people aren't out there, but for the most part, we haven't seen it be a huge issue. The bigger issue that we've seen is people, local people, just trying to come in the night and essentially use the free unit opposed to charging at the residence.
Now, if I could go on to, with that topic right there, and Randy, if Randy can hear me, have you run into, have you run into problems finding places or charging your car?
Let me, I have a Tesla, so the car tells you where to go. And I charge it in my garage every night, and it gets over 300 miles. The question I think you were getting at, maybe the answer was, I could ask, was if you plug your car in, how many miles on average do you get in an hour? Because I went to a Charge Point in Maine. I was having dinner with my wife, and I was only getting about 20, 20 miles an hour to my car, which is really, which is slower than the charger in my garage. And I was just wondering, how many miles on this charger that you're recommending or suggesting for the borough would a car take? How many miles would it get in an hour?
So that's, I'm actually not sure of their official number, and it depends on a couple things. So they do have a power sharing option. So what that is, is essentially you use a two-plug station, but using half the amount of breakers, right? So if one person is charging, he's charging at full power. Somebody else comes up to charge, the station's now doing two stations. It's now actually splitting that power. So that decreases your charging amount by half. If I had to guess, it seems like you're probably at one of those power share stations. When we do installations...
I was the only vehicle there, and they did have a sign there, no overnight parking. So they obviously, they obviously had thought of that, what I think you were talking about. But I was just gonna ask you, how many, I mean, how powerful is it? How many, I didn't hear what you said, because it's...
It's very muffled.
It's a little muffled. How many, I mean, like, Tesla's got the superchargers, and they have different, even they have different levels. The newest ones are much faster than the ones that were out a few years ago. And I'm just, I'm wondering just how many miles, you should know how many miles on average that charges in an hour. Is it just 20 or 30 miles? Or is it like, it's not like it'll really give you a lot of miles, right? I mean, that's why, it might be enough, I'll give you 10 or 20 or 30 or 40 miles. Is that what you're talking about?
It depends on the vehicle a little bit. If you have a heavier electric vehicle that's a little older technology, it may be lower. I know Charge Point, I believe their realm is 50 to 60. But again, there's different vehicles, different batteries, that all play into essentially how efficient that battery and how efficient that vehicle is still using electric power.
Was that 50 or 60 miles? Is that what he referred to?
Yes.
Randy? Yes?
Yes.
It can like, it might garage, Nancy.
No, I meant what he just said.
Yeah, I can get about, I can get maybe 40 to 50 miles an hour on charge at home. But at home, it doesn't matter. You plug it in, you go to your home. But yeah, but on the road, it matters if you're traveling.
Very much so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So they do, to answer that question, Charge Point does offer a Level Three charging station, which is, I think, what you're referring to, to the Tesla stations. If I'm being completely frank, that's a whole different realm of charging stations that I don't think the borough is gonna even be interested in. They're extremely expensive, and the reason for that is, is because of the amount of power that they're putting out. And really, the only place that those have been installed are on major commuting turnpikes, on major highways, at rest areas, so that people who are traveling cross-country, cross-state can stop and charge up quickly. What most of these people that are using the Level Two stations to doing are really just topping off. They're looking for that little bit extra. While I'm going shopping, I might as well charge my car a little bit. They're truly not looking to get a full charge or to get the fastest, you know, charge and then back to create, you know, going cross-country.
Mr. Parker, can I ask you another question? This, getting back to the insurance program, how much is, how much does that cost? Like, is there a cost for us to pay for that insurance?
Yeah. So that's, the way they do it is into a, they have different year plans, so you can save a little bit by prepaying the plans in advance. And that will, that can be worked into a quote and figured out, depending on if we go through any Co-Stars or tips or any procurement services, those prices do vary. So I'd prefer not to give a hard number at this time.
Could you give us an estimate? Like, is this like $50 a year? Could you give us an estimate? Like, is this like $50 a year? Or is it like $400 a year?
It's, I believe about $1,000 a year.
Okay. All right. I have another question. What, and I don't want this to appear negative, but I'd like to know, what is one way that these devices can be vandalized? And can they be?
So-
And have you had any, have you had any incidents of that?
So I haven't seen any. I know that the biggest vandal issue honestly has been colleges, because colleges are looking to put these in. They like to promote that they're green. And college students unfortunately just don't care about other people's property. So that's really been the biggest issue. And that's, and that's just adolescents just, you know, just being stupid. People still may vandalize them a little bit, but there's really not much you can do. The actual plug itself stays locked into the station until you swipe your card or you hit on your phone that you're going to use the station. And you have to have an accountant to do that. And then once you're done, you put that plug back in, and that plug re-locks and secures in the station. So essentially, the most crucial part to it is that plug to make sure people can use it, and that's essentially vandal-proof. I mean, people could graffiti the stations if they really would like. We really don't see that being that big of an issue, because there's really not that much real estate on it for people to graffiti. So really, it's not that big of a concern. If it was a college, I would say it was a slight concern, but being where we are, I would not see it as a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, let me first say that I would love to support green energy, but there's always going to be a cost involved. And I hear the idea that this is a great grant and that there is no match. However, I'm also hearing that there's a match because it will only cover 90%. So there's at least a 10% match. There has to be if you only cover 90%.
No, that's the limits. It's $4,500 or 90%. The $4,500 is the maximum. We got $4,500 per plug in Middletown. If I wasn't clear on that, I apologize.
Okay, that's no problem. So if it only costs, so if it costs $4,500, it's 100% covered?
Correct.
Okay. Because then I misunderstood what the 90% meant. Okay, so can you tell us what this two-plug system is going to cost?
So the whole, if you want to go from, the station will be about, for the two-plug station, it'll be about $10,000 ballpark.
Okay.
Installation, that really depends on if there's electrical infrastructure that's already there. The second biggest cost in the installation is where that panel is. So if you have a panel right on the outside of the building and the station's going 10 feet from that on a sidewalk, no new asphalt needed, no real trenching needed. So that becomes, you know, maybe $3,000 installation. On the other end, if you need electrical upgrades, if you're doing a station that's a 400-foot run across a parking lot, I mean, you're going to be talking much bigger numbers, so.
Sure. And then on top of that would be the insurance.
That's into the $10,000. That includes the insurance, all the mounting hardware, the station itself.
Okay.
And yes, Ray, we would be purchasing through CoStarz.
Okay, yeah.
We do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a time limit? If we applied for the grant and we got the grant, is there a time limit before we need them installed?
Once the rebate has been awarded, and to give you an idea of the process, you actually have to have everything chosen and quoted and ready to go before you can submit the rebate. So they don't, you don't apply for a rebate and then spend a lot of time dealing with administrative nonsense. But once you've been approved for a rebate, you have 180 days to have the project completed. If the project is not completed and the final document's submitted by 180 days, the voucher expires. However, you can reapply and get a new voucher. We had this actually happen in Middletown Township. There was a delay and their voucher expired. We went back and applied for another voucher, which was then awarded and covered the project.
So essentially, if we're interested, what you want to know right tonight is whether we're interested, and then you'll get us some kind of proposal through your pricing and the locations that we choose, that will tell us, you know, $10,000 is covered with the grant. It'll cost you $4,000 or $2,000 for electrical work and any other associated cost. And then you'll also give us a yearly, the assurance program yearly costs going forward.
That is correct, yeah. So essentially, the next step here would be to essentially see where the sites would be first off, so I could give you an accurate, you know, labor. If it was a project that you wanted the full labor incorporated in, then the next step, once I present you with those quotes, you could then make a decision, and then they would be able to, TMA would be able to submit that to then get the approval. And that can actually be, we've seen boroughs and townships do that kind of before the final decision was made, because once you have those quotes in hand, you can go ahead and secure that voucher. So that way, you have a little bit of time to still consider assuring that you have that receipt and that your money will be available if you move forward on the project.
Okay. One thing that we've done as well is, because that clock starts ticking the second that you submit and say, okay, your voucher's approved, the clock starts ticking right now. We have prepared voucher rebates and let them sit. We just don't click send. If there's something that a municipality, something else a municipality needs to work out, or they say we want to wait a little while, we don't have to hit send on that right away. So it can be prepared, so that if Mr. Mitchell or someone needs two weeks to establish some kind of administrative site or something like that, whatever it may be, we can wait on it, so that it basically extends that timeframe for you.
Another question I have. What's the life expectancy of one of these units?
I actually can say I've never gotten that question. They, ChargePoint's been putting them in for, I believe, they've been in business about seven years now, and they haven't reported any issues with their initial models. I would assume under normal good conditions, if they're being taken care of, and you know, obviously you have the Assure program to take care of that, definitely be able to get easily 10 years out of the station.
Okay. And is there any concern for going forward, kind of like Apple does with their things and makes proprietary things? Tesla has their proprietary connection. I think, was it Nikola or the other truck manufacturer that's going to be coming out with electric vehicle? Will this be upgradable, or will they be using the same technology? Is there standard in place for these connections that everybody will adhere to?
So, their plug itself is currently made for all the vehicles. Actually, with the exception of Tesla, Tesla's actually come with, Teslas only work with Tesla, so they come with an adapter to be able to use. As new vehicles come out, I would honestly see them sticking with most of the main ports. If they were to change it and ChargePoint were to offer a new station, those cords are easily interchangeable. So the ability to change out the plug for a new plug, you know, it's a new market. So if two, three years down the road, the plug's completely changed, it would not require a whole new station. The plugs are easily able to be switched out. And ChargePoint's done that kind of on, on the initial reason they've done that is so, for any issues, if the plug were to get scratched or broken, you don't need a whole new station. You can just replace that single plug.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And if after a year, we decide that-
We don't want to have the service anymore. Is there a cancellation fee or we can just cancel?
So that would be, it depends on what you purchase. So they have different, essentially, prepay year, year plans. So you could start with a one-year plan. You wouldn't be able to cancel during that one year, but at the end of that year, if you would like to cancel and no longer have that, the Assure, you would be able to do that, just not renew it. At the same token, if at the end of the first year, you said, this is great, we're going to do another year, another two years, another three years, again, you can pre-purchase that directly. And all of that will be directly through ChargePoint at that time. So I guess one more thing to add about what ChargePoint handles. If you are going to charge for the station, ChargePoint handles all of the credit card transactions. That does not have to go through the borough. You'll set them up with your financial information, and then they pay that out quarterly. So if you are getting cost for the station, it's not something that you have to figure out how to take credit cards through the borough. All of that is handled through ChargePoint directly.
And just went and looked through the program narrative to more clearly answer your question. The grant program requires that, sorry, I just lost it here. Chargers must be maintained and operated for a minimum of three years from the date of project completion.
Any questions from any attendees on Zoom?
The station doesn't not run without the Assure, though, just to be clear. The Assure is essentially an insurance plan. If you were to get rid of that, you would still have the station. You would still be meeting the DEP requirement. So if you had said, we only want a year of insurance, as long as that station's still operational, you're not stopping using the station, the insurance plan is essentially just an insurance plan.
So it would only be $1,000 a year?
Yes.
Since some of this is, I mean, it's very difficult. It's very muffled. And I want to make sure I heard it correctly. So, so you're able to present us with a, like a preliminary contract, and just break it all down? How much would it cost and so forth? And then we can, we can mobile that over? Is that, did I hear that right?
Yes, that's correct. I'll give you an itemized quote. So you'll see everything from the stations, the mounting bolts, the insurance plan. Everything will be listed itemized with individual pricing.
Okay, that's great.
Any other attendees on Zoom have a question?
I don't. I believe Bob shook his head no, so.
I don't anymore.
Okay, all right. I guess we'll move on.
Flip this around then.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you.
Appreciate you both.
Thank you, and TMA Bucks appreciates Morrisville.
All right, we'll move on to item 5, which is public comment.
Public.
Anybody sign up there? No one signed up, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to 6, approval of the minutes. 6A, approval of the minutes for the Borough Council regular meeting of August 17, 2020.
There we go.
Can I have a motion?
Someone?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on it?
Yes, I did, I did notice that the adjournment time was wrong. I mentioned it to the borough today. I don't know if they're fixing that or not. I never got around to sending it to Scott. I think it says 7:16. I think it's supposed to be 8.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had a 16-minute meeting, have we?
No.
Wouldn't that be something?
It would be. All right, is everyone okay with approving it with that change? Or is there anything else?
I just don't want you to quote me on the 8. Like, where were you here? Was it 9:16? Does anybody remember?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but-
We'll check the video.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll check. Okay.
Does anybody object to approving it pending the correction of the time of adjournment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Motion passes. We'll move on to 7, Finance. 7A is the Treasury's report. And I believe everybody had a copy of that. Any discussion on that before we move on? All right. 7B, a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay bills. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second it then.
Okay. I have to, I can't hear very well. It's just very muffled tonight. I'm not sure why. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I had a couple of questions, but the first is the, no, I'm sorry, that's under the bills. I was wondering, Scott, we had two advertisements, legal advertisements. Do you remember what they were for? And in the future, can we get copies of those sent to us when there's an advertisement?
Sure.
Yeah, it's, I didn't look at the actual bill, you know, the invoice itself, but they're like $300. I'm just curious as to be what they were. But it's not stopping me from voting. I just wanted to know.
Yep, yeah, I don't recall off the top of my head, but we can find out for you.
I'll say something.
Could have been.
Anyone else? All right, can we have a roll call, please? Councilwoman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Halala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
Councilman Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, moving on to 8, reports. 8A, the mayor's report. He didn't join us by phone or Zoom, did he?
It doesn't appear as though he did.
Okay. We'll move on to 8B, the police chief's report. Is he with us?
He is.
Yes, sir, I'm here. I have three things to discuss tonight. The department has raised $14,000, and we have ordered new body cameras for the officers. Our last body cameras were five years old. So the new ones that we are purchasing at no cost to the borough will have better technology, better video, and better audio. The money was raised mainly between myself and Corporal Smith going out to our businesses in and around Morrisville. The businesses were Dairy Queen, Barnes Pharmacy, the Morrisville Economic Corporation, Carlets Printing, Mas Iron Steel, Resource Recycling, Shades of Green, Ken Terry, our 7-Eleven, Sky King, Pastor Mario's Church, Britton Industries, the Morrisville Business Association, Bears Auto, and Eagles Lodge. We expect there's going to be more money coming in. This, we have enough money to buy six right now, and we expect that we're going to have some more. We'll probably go up to eight. We are the first department, again, in Bucks County to go to an upgraded version of our body cameras. We were the first in the county to start five years ago, body cameras. So in this day of age, with everything going on, everybody wants to see video, we will have the best that's out there right now. That's number one. So I'm very proud of the officers for raising that money, because it was not going to be in our budget to do it. So they know how important it is. It's how important the trust of our citizens are, of our department, that we do memorialize every incident we go out on. Second, on Thursday night, I will be participating in a panel discussion after a video through the Bucks County Community College and the Bucks County District Attorney's Office. They will be showing a movie called Walking Wild Black, Love is the Answer. It's a one-hour movie that starts at 6 o'clock, and then at 7:15 will be a panel discussion, like I said, that I'll be participating in. There's advertisements up here on the table if anybody would like to see it. Lastly, you're looking, I think, Directive 124 and 221 are on your agenda for tonight? Yes? You guys going to be voting on that? Do you know?
Yeah, they're on the agenda.
Okay. If, when they are approved, if I could get a final version sent to my email as a Word document, I appreciate that, because I haven't seen what the final version is exactly going to be. So when that's all done, could you have-
Yeah, it was emailed on Friday.
Not the, not the final version. It was, it went back and forth about whether he was leaving it in or he wasn't leaving it in, parts of it. I don't know what the final one is. So when it's all over, if I could just get copies of those two directives, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we can send it to you again. That's the one they're voting on tonight, the one that was circulated on Friday.
Okay, well, I don't, I didn't get that, so.
You were on the email.
Okay. All right, so I appreciate if I get those two. Every time we do this-
If you were to email it, I would say-
I need a copy of that.
Thank you. Your comments were really well received and on point, and we thank you for your input. It was very helpful.
Chief, where are those directives initiating from? Are you writing them from scratch, or are you getting them from somewhere?
I have a whole set of 100 directives. They are either made up by myself, or taken from other departments, or taken from the International Chief of Police Association, the Pennsylvania Chief of Police Association, multiple places they come from.
Okay.
But I have a whole set of directives downstairs, ready to go. But I have a whole set of directives downstairs, ready to go, but it's going to take time to get each one of them approved.
Yeah, I just didn't know where they were coming from.
Yeah, they don't, they're a lot of different places.
Do we have one, I noticed that you have a directive regarding, I know, I don't know where the feedback's coming from, but I know you have a directive regarding chases outside of town. Is there a directive about officers and if, like, what their status or what they're allowed to be out of town if it's not on police business while they're working?
I don't know. The pursuit directive is what you're going to be looking at tonight.
Right, but I'm asking, other than a pursuit or helping one, like, one of our neighboring townships.
During a pursuit?
No, no, outside of a pursuit.
You're talking about mutual aid?
Outside of mutual aid, outside of a pursuit. When the officers are on duty, is there any kind of directive about, are they allowed to leave the Borough of Morrisville, for how long they're allowed to leave? Are they allowed to go someplace else while on duty?
That's mutual aid.
No, outside of mutual aid. They're not going.
I think she's asking if you, if they can go down to a rusa for lunch, for a lunch break.
Or even not on a lunch break, in the middle of the day, they just decide to take a ride somewhere. Is there anything that we have that, that says what they can and cannot do? Or are they supposed to be within the borough limits?
No, my officers leave the borough a lot of different times. I mean, they, they, like, to process a prisoner, they had to take them up to Lower Makefield. They could go to a lot of different other places for doing other things. They could go over Jersey to pick up a prisoner. So I don't know, I'm a little confused on what you really would be looking for.
I'm just asking, what, is, is there any kind of directives or any kind of policy about outside of, like, going up to Doylestown or going, you know, to pick up a prisoner?
There would be so many different things that could be in the day of an officer. It's, it's virtually impossible to write a directive every day.
Okay. Just asking.
Yeah, it's virtually impossible, because there's just so many different things and different scenarios that would come up every day to where they go.
Okay.
What they would have to go up for.
Are you asking about, like, non-police business, but during the workday?
Yes.
Oh. I think she's asking about non-police business, but during the workday.
Such as?
Leaving the borough limits on non-police business while they're on duty. Is there anything?
Not that I know of.
Okay. What is your philosophy or policy, internally, what do you think about, like?
And it depends on how far you're talking and what they're going for, or I, this hasn't been an issue.
Okay.
So if there's an issue that, that needs to be dealt with, then by, by police, you know, send it to the mayor, and we'll deal with the, the individual situation.
Yeah, I'm just asking in general.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that as being a concern. I, these guys have, they're here.
Mr. Parker? Can I, may I ask the chief a question?
I didn't see him quick enough.
Yes? Mr. Parker? Oh, he says that was my phone. I had to.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mitchell, can I ask? Yeah, this is for the chief. Chief, I was just wondering, what, we have enforcement equipment that was purchased this month. Is there something, it was like $1,800. What, what specifically, is it out of the, out of the norm or something different, special, or what, what even was it? If you're allowed to tell us.
Where are you, what, where's that, are you taking that off the bill list?
It's on the financial.
I would, I, I don't know.
Are you talking about the financial statement or the bill list?
No, not, it's, I didn't see it on the bill. Well, one of the things I saw on the bill list, but in the financial, it says month-to-date was $1,800, $1,879.
Yeah, I don't know, we would have to look back and.
And I just didn't know what it was.
I can, I can pull the bills for the month and send it to you if you need me to.
Okay. Second question, I did, I didn't know if you said it, but I couldn't hear it. I heard the list of people that you said were helping to raise money for the body cams, but did you give a figure of what you have already?
We have, we have raised $14,000, and body cameras cost approximately $13,900 and change.
Chief, did you go to your third item yet, or no?
Yeah, the third item was just that I could, I needed a copy of the directives electronically, that's all.
The mayor probably has them, you can ask the mayor.
One more.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, you were both on the email, but we can send it to you again.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Another question. There was, please, this was listed on the financial, police donations of $12,000. Would that be the body cams? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we've just received three or four more checks.
I don't really know what he said.
He said, he said, since then, we've received more checks.
Oh, okay.
Because your.
Thank you.
Your financial statement only goes to the end of August.
To the end of August, yeah.
How many cameras are you getting?
Six.
Oh, six. So you've reached your goal.
Well, yeah, we reached our goal, but if I do.
That's fantastic.
But if I do get more money, I will buy more cameras and backup batteries and other things that go with the system itself.
Well, congratulations, that's great.
But we paid for it all.
Yeah, fantastic.
I wasn't advertised for this, because I, I hadn't heard about it. I mean, I would have donated if there was still time to donate.
We, we sent it out to our, the businesses in the area. We sent out letters to them, and we actually went and visited some of the bigger businesses.
Is that something that you want to make more well-known on our website or something?
Well, hold on, the chief was still speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, can't hear. Apologize.
You might have to pick the mic up, chief, sorry.
We did not put it on our website. We just did it individually with the businesses. We didn't think we had to, because we weren't going to, we were looking, we knew exactly how much we needed to raise, and we did that. So, so we did not go, no, we did not go out to individuals.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not being critical at all. I think it's great that you guys did it. I just, you know, if we could, probably if you could have raised more money, if, if you sent everybody.
Well, if we have another project that comes up, we will, we'll do that.
Yeah.
But we went to the businesses, and the one individual that's on here, actually, we went to the Bridge Authority and asked them for money, and they denied us, but he works for them and wrote us a check himself.
Can you, can you send us a list of all the businesses that donated?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
After we're done, we're going to put it on our website to thank everybody.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be advertised, and when we do get the cameras come in, I'll try to do some kind of press release to make sure all these people are thanked in that press release.
Can we put their names on the website, too, thanking them?
Yeah, if you give us a list, we'll put it up.
Yeah, they should definitely be recognized for stepping up.
All right, thank you.
I think that the public would be very receptive to this and probably want to donate if it was made, if you took it to a broader audience.
Thank you, chief, well done.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, chief. Okay, is the chief done? I can't see him, so I don't even know if he's still there.
Yes, he's done.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to eight C, which is the managers' report. Do you have a couple of items you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, I have two items that were noted on the agenda and just one general announcement. The first is, we received a request if the borough would be interested in allowing musicians to perform at Williamson Park when it isn't otherwise in use. Of course, a schedule would have to be developed based on how many, if any, agree to participate in such a program. Basically, these would be like mini concerts. It would be no cost to the borough. It gives the musicians an opportunity to perform in front of a live audience, usually small groups. There would be no soliciting allowed, but the musicians would be allowed to have a receptacle for unsolicited donations.
I have a question.
Sure.
Actually, probably a couple. So is this something that the borough would be sponsoring, or is it, another group is going to be heading it? And the reason why I'm asking is from an insurance perspective.
This thing that if council agrees to allow us to do it, the borough would be making it available. These aren't the kind of people that are walking around with certificate of insurance and a business name. So it's more for casual pop-up performances for small groups.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of a loosely organized idea.
Consortium of musicians just getting together and wanting to do something, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And the idea was for 2020, but with the weather changing, it might be too late, I'm not sure, so this could end up being something for 2021.
Okay.
It would be up to you guys to let me know what your comfort level was with that.
Is this from the rec committee, or this is from? No, okay. So is this going to be like small groups? It's not going to be like large concerts or anything?
No, no, it's small groups.
Small groups.
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, so am I.
Absolutely.
I actually like the idea a lot.
Yeah, I think it's great.
All right.
And no charging for this, and they're not charging for the stage?
No, no, no charge for anybody. They're going to put a collection bin or a collection can out, and if people donate, they donate, but it's unsolicited.
Okay. But I, I would hope that they'll be working, of course, with Lorraine and, and the park schedule when it's available.
Oh, yes, this would be when the park isn't otherwise reserved or being used.
Do we have somebody that has an interest already?
We've had one person express interest, and he claims there's a second, so.
Oh, great.
I don't know if this is going to snowball into something that will actually happen, but I'll figure we can explore it and see where it goes.
Williamson Cafe.
Yeah. So if I'm correct, I'm hearing no objections to us seeing what happens with this?
Let's see what happens.
Okay. The second item is First Friday Movie Nights. Lots of communities host these First Friday of the month events. First Friday Movie Nights at Williamson Park at dusk is something where people would bring chairs or blankets to watch a movie. The borough would pick the movie to keep it family-friendly. This would run for six months out of the year, May to October. It's a free community event. There is a vendor who actually brings and sets up the big movie, you know, the big oversized movie screen in the park and plays the movie once it gets dark. The annual cost for this is about $7,000 to $8,000, which would be paid, of course, from the recreation fund, and this is something that we wouldn't be able to get started until spring of 2021. But I wanted to see what, this, again, was a suggestion from the community I'm bringing to your attention, so is there any question or concern or discussion, like, from Mr. Bowers about this?
I have a question.
He's already aiming his microphone, so that usually means he.
Let Justin go first.
Do we have money in the fund?
It's for next year, so you would have to budget for it.
This would be for 2021, yes.
My only comment, I think it's a great idea. I just know that anytime I'm at the park at sundown, the mosquitoes love to come out.
Well, we're right along the river. That's kind of a occupational hazard when you're right along the river in the summer months, but you buy a can of off.
I was going to say, you could, you could buy a can of off and charge people to spray them.
Yeah, you buy a can of off, right?
Exactly.
Whole business involved there.
It's at your own risk.
I like the idea.
Question. So the person that's, who's providing the movies? Because there's a big trademark issue, and there are a couple of communities that actually had to pay back money when they used movies that were not, they weren't allowed to use.
You are correct. We would have to get a license that would authorize us to display these movies to the public, and we would be barred from charging any admission or any other kind of fee or even soliciting donation. And that would allow us to publicly display the movie. They would provide us with a menu of movies to choose from, and like I said, the borough would select the movies so that we know it's family-friendly content.
Okay.
Could we offset the cost by selling cans of off?
Yes, you probably could get away with that. And you might make, you might make a cool mint doing that.
Yeah, right.
Could we have?
I like the idea, I mean.
Could we have vendors there selling, like, popcorn or ice cream?
I believe you can have vendors there selling popcorn and ice cream, as long as you're not charging or soliciting donations for the viewing of the movie.
Got it. Okay.
That would interfere with the terms and conditions of the, the public license.
Who, who suggested that? Because I actually, I think that's a good idea, I mean, you know, give an opportunity to some vendors who may not have any, anything that evening to set up down there, you know?
That was Mr. Bowers who suggested the, the vendors.
Very good idea.
Such a smart guy.
Yeah, hot dogs and funnel cake would probably go over well.
Yes, absolutely.
So if you have no objection, we'll explore this further and see what we can do to include it in the 2021 budget.
Okay, great idea.
Okay. And last but not.
I'm sorry, one last thing, is this vendor local?
Actually, the vendor who does it for most of the communities around us, from like Doylestown South, is actually a vendor from Burlington, New Jersey.
Okay.
Because they do Central Jersey and Lower Bucks, and some things in Philadelphia.
Thank you.
Yep. Last but not least, this wasn't on the agenda, just to bring to your attention, starting Wednesday, the contractor will start construction on curb ramps at nine locations within the borough under the grant for the ADA Curb Ramp Project. Mr. Bowers is aiming his microphone, Mr. President.
Can we publish that list of where they're going to be at so that residents have an idea?
We sure can.
Would be able to put that, I don't know if he asked if we'd be able to put it on the website and kind of let the public know?
We sure can. If you'd like, I can tell you, if you want the inside scoop tonight, the nine locations are Philadelphia Avenue at Washington Street, at Washington, Barclay &amp; Francis, Barclay &amp; Althea, and Grandview and Melvin. Philadelphia and Washington, we're doing one. Barclay &amp; Francis, we're doing two. Barclay &amp; Althea, we're doing two. And Grandview and Melvin, we're doing four.
Okay. Is that it?
Just when you think it was safe. I have one other thing, but I was going to save it until we get to that action item on the agenda. My office received a note from a resident who is willing to serve as the alternate member on the zoning hearing board. We usually get a resume or a letter, but this was just a short, two-sentence note. Unfortunately, it didn't include a phone number or email, but we were able to get in contact today, and the person is willing to serve, but I don't really have, like, a detailed letter or a resume to share with you, but if you want, I can wait, and we can talk about this when we get to that action item on the agenda. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
That was going to be my question when we got to the action agenda. Who do we have? Okay.
Scott, I have a question for you. I noticed that at the Robert Morris Plaza, the Christmas tree died. Do you know what happened?
I don't.
Are we taking it down? We're leaving it to see what happens?
Public Works is going to be removing it if it doesn't otherwise rehabilitate itself.
I was wondering, it's one of those trees that turn.
I don't think so. That's a little too brown for a hibernating tree.
That's a shame.
Yeah, it was a nice tree.
I know. I know.
What are we talking about? I'm sorry.
The Christmas tree at Robert Morris Plaza that has recently died.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. If you're done, we're going to move on to 8D, which is committee reports. Do we have any? I don't think we do.
I have one, if I may, sir.
Okay.
All right. So vacant properties committee met on the 15th of September. We discussed the seven properties, the residential, seven residential properties that are a part of the mitigation process for blighted properties. As of now, we have three of those that are, that are fully mitigated and no longer in that, in the process and not being, and no action is being taken. There are two that have active permits, and the process is stalled to ensure that those permits translate into work on those properties, that translate into rehabilitating them. And then we have two that are in various states of being pursued. Also, we voted and approved to initiate that process for one additional property. That was at the recommendation of our zoning, our zoning officer. The board did approve that, and the notifications are being sent, and the information is being pulled together to prove the case of it being blighted and vacant. Just real quick, I want to thank Jeff from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority and Steve Ware, our zoning officer from Keystone Municipal Services. Those two guys do the bulk of this work, and we're starting to really see after a little bit of time, because it does take time for these things to take effect, we're starting to see some really good things from this program, and I want to thank both of them for the work that they've been doing on it, along with our Borough Manager. Thank you.
I apologize. I, you know, it's still very muffled, so I really only heard every couple of words, but it's, there was a nine, something added to that, to your list, Mike?
Yes, there was a property added that, at the request of our zoning officer, based on the, on the condition of the property and the fact that it's vacant and it's not livable, he's starting the, the process of pulling the information together to build the case on the property.
And it, and it wasn't on the list that we received from the Borough Manager?
No, this would have been a brand-new one that we just discussed on the 15th. He's just now starting to work on it. We just approved it.
Okay. Are you allowed to, are you allowed to tell us where it is?
I mean, I can, if that's what you want to know, sure. It's 29 North Lafayette Avenue.
Oh, okay. The one that's, well, that actually was listed, and that's in the estate, right? Isn't that working within the state? I think.
I think that one.
Okay, so then, then you do have an updated list, yeah. But I don't think, I think that was a possible addition on the list. That one is now, if it's the same list that you're looking at. It was a possible addition. That's now an official addition.
Thank you.
It was, it was in the written manager's report that was in the draw.
Yes. That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to nine action items. 9A is a call for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the annual minimum municipal obligations forms, the MMO, for both the police uniform and non-uniform pension plans be submitted to the Pennsylvania municipal retirement system by October 5th, 2020, and authorizing the Borough Manager to execute the necessary documents. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering, there, there's no money listed and mentioned here. There is, there is one payment due, is that right, Mr. Mitchell, or no?
Yeah, it was on the memo that was in your packet.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's not part of the motion, though. I always thought we should have the motion to include how much money it's going to be, but I might, I might be the only one that feels that way. So which one, which one came unfunded? Was it the $19,000?
The non-uniformed is overfunded, so there's nothing due on it. The one that has the slight shortage is the police pension. Virginia, if you're still with us, can you quote the amount for the record?
Certainly. For the uniforms, Scott?
Yes.
Point 23?
I believe it was attached to the memo, but hold on a second, I'm just pulling it out.
Yeah, there was like a tab sheet attached to the memo that has the breakdown.
The non-uniform, as you said, is actually overfunded by almost $20,000, actually.
Right.
It's never been an issue. The uniformed is $107,910, but not all of that is money the Borough has to put out.
Right. But most of that will be covered by state aid, and the Borough will only have to make up the difference.
Didn't they subtract that from the other figure and give you a final figure on that? Like 10?
107,900, $107,910, yes.
Right.
But we won't know until this time next year how much of that the Borough will be paying.
Okay, thank you. Let's, so we won't include it because we don't have a final figure, but at least the public is aware of the possibilities and, you know, understands, understands what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9B, a call for a motion to approve a millage payment in the amount of $88,000 to the Morrisville Fire Company per their 2020 fire fund budget contingent upon receipt of payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9C, a call for a motion to approve a millage payment in the amount of $48,000 to Capital Health per the 2020 EMS fund budget contingent upon receipt of payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9D, a call for a motion to award the annual 2020, 2021 consortium salt bid. As bid through the Bucks County Consortium to Morton's, Morton Salt, Inc., per their bid price of $47.75 price per ton delivered and $47 price per ton undelivered, contract to run to September 30th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9E, a call for a motion to authorize the advertising, I guess, of the adoption of the proposed 2021 budget at the Borough Council Meeting on October 19th, 2020. Public hearing on the 2021 budget to be held on November, we have a date?
It's up to council.
Okay, so we'll leave that blank, I guess, at this point. An adoption of the final budget, final 2021 budget on December 21st, 2020. Can I have a motion?
So moved, just for discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Discussion?
We haven't seen the budget, so I don't know how, I don't know that I can authorize the advertising until I actually have seen it. Am I the only one that feels this way?
Yeah, when are we going to get the preliminary budget?
Well, you're going to see the, a rough cut of the draft of the budget by the end of the month, but you're statutorily obligated to adopt one and to provide public notice for it, whether you like its contents or not.
I, I agree with you, Scott, but normally we actually look at the budget first before we actually advertise it.
But aren't we only advertising the dates that we're going to discuss it?
Yeah, you're not advertising the budget, you're advertising these three dates, one of which you need to pick tonight.
All right.
So is our next council meeting October 19th?
Yes.
Okay. So, so we can't, you don't want to authorize us that night to advertise?
How would we advertise it that night? If you're.
Well, not advertise that night, but we couldn't authorize that night to advertise?
Well, that's what we're asking you to do.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is by then, I'll actually have been able to see it. Right?
Right, but.
Okay.
Well, it's the proposed budget, it's not the budget.
Yeah, the final, the final budget doesn't get adopted until December.
So December. We're not, we're not approving the proposed budget, we're approving the date that the proposed budget will be made public.
Right.
Yes.
And that we have to do in advance, so we, we're not.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Scott, when it, do you know, when, I haven't had a chance to, what's the date of the November meeting?
The 16th.
Yeah, November 16. Do you want to, do you want to make it correspond with the council meetings and not have a separate meeting? I mean, that's, that's up to council.
I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I don't know what else.
Yeah, that certainly would work for us.
Is that okay with everybody else, or do we want to have a separate meeting?
I'm good with the 16th.
Well, I like the idea of combining them, but at the same time, a public hearing could, just so you know, it could lengthen the meeting by at least an hour or so if people come out.
I'm okay with the 16th.
Just prepared for that. Or we can have the public hearing an hour before our regular meeting.
You could have it at 6 o'clock and have your regular meeting at 7 o'clock or whenever the public hearing ends.
Correct, we do that.
Counsel's pleasure.
It was just a suggestion. What does everybody think?
All right.
Let's do it the same night. Okay. All right, I don't hear anybody else objecting, so we'll do it the same night as the meeting.
So that November date is the 16th, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you want to have it at 6 o'clock, Mr. President, or?
I'm okay with that, as long, as long as nobody else objects or has an issue.
So we have a finance meeting on this Thursday. Is the budget going to be available for that finance meeting?
The rough cut, I think we'll be ready in time, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is the council members who forwarded the motion and seconded it, are they okay with that date being added to it?
Yes. Do we have to add the time, or that doesn't, that doesn't matter?
Well, we can add the time for. I would add the time, just to be. Yeah, so November 16th at 6:00 P.M. Okay. All right, so is there any more discussion, or we're ready to vote? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, motion passes. 9H, a call for a motion to adopt Police Directive 124, Social Media and Social Networking. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do a motion in a second? Any discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9G, a call for a motion to adopt Police Directive 221, Pursuits, Operation of Police Vehicles. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. I don't think I got the first.
I'm going to have to rely on Scott for that, because I cannot make out who's saying what. All right, so we have a motion in a second? Any discussion on this side?
I do have one question, actually about both of these. I think if I read correctly, that Seattle Law is the one that, that reviewed these, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, whereas Randy's?
We both did.
Not able to?
No, we both did. We refer, we reviewed it.
Yeah, so.
We, let me, let me answer your question. We reviewed it, they reviewed it, and the police. I was gonna say, that's why I commented before, the chief responded to us, and we, we had a back-and-forth with him. He has very, I thought, good comments, that we bounced back and forth between Labor Council, that's their specialty, and us as general counsel to the, to the Borough. These are important, these are incredibly important.
John.
Police directives, this is why the most important ones have been handled first.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just, I was wondering why, why they were involved. I thought that you were able to do that, but I didn't realize you were both doing it.
We were, we were able, we were able, we, two heads are by the one. We wanted to make sure, because of the importance and because of the, because of the potential for litigation over these, these are the hottest items right now. This is all the rage, and we wanted to make sure that we have belts and suspenders on this one. We want to be penny-wise and dollar-fullish on this one, yeah.
Yeah, and they went back and forth two or three times with some pretty good comments, I thought, so.
It was a vigorous debate back and forth. You would have, you would have gotten a kick out of it. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9H, a call for a motion to approve the annual Winterfest Parade using the previously approved parade route. The Winterfest Parade will be held on Saturday, December 4th, 2021, and to be sponsored by HotRides LLC of Morrisville. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion, a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Could I, could I just clarify something, Mr. President?
Please.
This, this year's parade, the 2020 parade, is canceled.
Okay.
This is for 2021.
And I was only going to comment that Dawn Wilson said she's very sad that she had to cancel this month, this year's parade, but we just, we all know the reasons why, so, you know, looking forward to next year.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. 9I, a call for a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Winter Traffic Services, five-year agreement, agreement number 39000, 39344 with the Borough. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have two questions. Scott, is this the way it's been done for about how long? Like, I don't remember seeing five-year contracts like this before. Is this something new?
No. This has been at least 20 years, to my recollection, that the state's been doing it this way.
Is this new to the Borough?
Maybe I've just not seen the contract as such.
Not new to the Borough either. To answer Mr. Bowers' question, we're just coming off of a five-year agreement, and this is the start of a new five-year agreement.
Okay. I was a little confused by the roads that they listed, because they listed Althea to the bridge, and then they listed Farsley to the bridge. But I'm guessing that they've been reviewed by, you know, Public Works. I mean, I know that's what we do, unless they were considering south side of the street and north side. I didn't really know why it was listed twice. But I will say, I appreciate the fact that there was a 3% addition to the, to what they're giving us each year, which should be able to cover our contract for Public Works, since they're the ones who do it. So the incremental changes, additions are good.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Moving on to 9J. Moving on to 9J, a call for a motion to authorize the advertising amendment to the zoning ordinance to change the definition of family contained in Section 465-6. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, having a motion in a second. Discussion?
Yes, I have a couple, I have a question. In March of 2012, we actually passed Ordinance Number 992, which I guess, I think that's referenced in this new one. Because now it's codified as 465. But, uh, this, this was not only suggested, but almost insisted from our attorneys at the time, along with the Bucks County Planning Commission. So, but it appears that it's different, it's different now. And I want to know, are we still covered by putting in that, um, the three-person role? And I, I think there's possibility that people that are friendly but not related could be living together. And, uh, I just, I guess I'd want, you know, our attorney to comment on that, if he can.
Yeah, Scott's here. How's everyone?
Hi, Scott.
Can you, can you rephrase your question? What do you mean? You asked, are we covered and what's the sense?
Well, because we were actually, the reason the wording was changed in 2012 was because we, we were open for challenges. We were open for litigation, and that's why we changed it. And that was actually per the, the Planning Commission as well. And our attorney obviously got involved. So we, it read at the time, this is the, this is 2012. Any number of individuals, this is definition of family, whether related or unrelated, living together on a non-transient basis as a single housekeeping unit and doing their cooking on the premises. But it shall not apply to occupants of a club, a fraternity house, lodge, or residential club.
They only order out, so I don't count.
Which is different than the new one.
They only order out, so I don't count.
Sorry, I put it out here. Which references, uh, that they can't be, uh, what's it, no more than three. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's how it's-
Are they related?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just if I could clarify something. Remember, this is authorizing to advertise an amendment. The latest version of the language that you saw in your delivery last week has still not been reviewed by the Morrisville Planning Commission and still has to be reviewed by the Bucks County Planning Commission. So it is quite possible that there will be a revised version of this coming back to you. But this is what we've submitted to both Planning Commissions for their review and comment.
Okay. I was just wondering if you had any unofficial off the record, like if they've already pre-reviewed this or-
Neither, neither one has seen it yet. The Morrisville Planning Commission has it on their agenda for, to review later this month. And the Bucks County Planning Commission will hopefully review it at their meeting in early October. And if they don't get to it at that meeting, this could get kicked in November, to your November meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Based on that, are we putting a cart before the horse and approving this for advertisement when it hasn't been fully vetted?
Well, not really, because we've got to meet advertising requirements for public notice. And we're either going to meet it for October, or we're going to meet it for November, or we may have to advertise it twice.
So is this just going to authorize you to advertise it at whatever time period it needs to be done?
Yes.
And then we'll have final say?
So that it's done in, ahead of time of your public meeting when you vote to adopt it?
Yes. We're not too-
Yes, and just to follow up on what Scott was saying with that, yeah, this is, it, it's with putting the advertisement now before the Planning Commission's review that, it, it's common in some places to do it different ways. But this is a way to make sure just everything is done. We can get the advertisement and get it out, be the most flexible for the borough's council schedule as the two Planning Commissions review it.
But then we may have to advertise it again? If it's denied?
Well, if we advert, no, the only reason why we would need to advertise it twice is if we advertise it for October to meet the minimum requirements under the statute. And we don't get, say, Bucks County Planning Commission's comments back in time, we may have to postpone it to council's November meeting and redo the public notice.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, I'm going to oppose this one, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Moving on to 9K. A call for a motion to appoint an alternate member of the zoning hearing board. Do you have a name, Scott?
Yeah, Mr. President, would you like me to? It's a Daniel Morganti of 726 Crown Street.
So the motion is to appoint Daniel, what was his last name?
Morganti. M-O-R-G-A-N-T-I of 726 Crown Street.
Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
No, you know, I hate to get-
But let me start this one, Nancy. I, I recruited Dan to, to apply for the alternate slot. This is what we, we were advised by our outside counsel on the H74 in North Pennsylvania issue that in anticipation of the zoning hearing board for Mr. Augustine on October 5th, that we would be well advised to have an alternate on hand in case we need one, in case all the members aren't available or if any of the members have to recuse themselves, which is a possibility, depending upon what Mr. Augustine's counsel, how he, how, how he sees the situation. So rather than calling the zoning hearing board, showing up with, with just the three members, and if one of them gets knocked off, we're now faced with waiting another month or two months for the next zoning hearing board. We can't afford that. The neighbors in my neighborhood are going crazy. We, we really need to get this thing resolved. And Dan is what, who I know from helping on my campaign a while ago. And his, his wife is on some boards with me. He was willing to do it, and he's a good citizen. He's just doing it for the benefit of the community. And I would, I would ask everybody to give a serious consideration, and I hope that we can approve him.
Okay. The only thing I was going to add is if I may add to the, to the motion, that this term would end on 2/17/2021, according to our roster. Because it's really, it's really very valuable that when we appoint anybody to these boards, that we actually put the dates in there of when, you know, because then-
So why would you have it so short, Nancy? Why wouldn't we let them sit on for a year? Is it, is it, doesn't it-
Because, because it's been, it's been vacant for the time that's been vacant, this is the time that's left, according to the roster. So, um-
I don't know.
Susan, actually Susan, who's our, she's the current chairperson, is that correct?
No, Raphael, uh-
No, Raphael, okay. Yeah, uh, okay. So Suzanne's term is up on the 21st, I mean, at the same time, 1/2/21. And Raphael, his isn't up until 22 because they're alternating. And the other one's 23. Now, that doesn't mean you can't reappoint come next February.
Well, this is an alternate slot. I don't, I guess I was for an alter, this is for an alternate, Nancy. You can appoint him for, I think it's a year you can appoint him as an alternate. We think that we'd want it as long as possible.
If, if-
I totally agree.
If, if I may, Mr. President-
Even with alternates, even with alternates, there are terms, right?
I, I think what Councilwoman Sherlock is referring to is that one of the, the previous alternate member was moved over by council as a permanent member to fill a vacancy and a permanent member spot, leaving ostensibly the unexpired term of the alternate member, which her belief is that if you make this appointment tonight, that you're appointing that person to fill the unexpired term of the alternate member.
Correct.
Which would then expire on, I forget the date, Nancy, wasn't it-
2/17. 2/17/21.
Yeah, February 17 of 2021. Instead of appointing someone to a brand-new term as an alternate member.
I, I, find my interject here. This is a brand-new, a brand-new term. He should be given a brand-new term. What is the term for the, for the alternate? Is it one year or?
I think they're only two-year terms. No, they're three-year terms. I'm sorry. They're three-year terms and they expire the first Monday in January.
I don't think this is a new term, no.
I'm okay with doing that.
It's, it's filling an old position.
Correct.
And did we advertise this for anyone else?
Uh, yeah, this alternate position has been advertised, I want to say, all year.
I was, I was going to say at least seven months.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on this tonight? Can we see Mr. Morganti's background before we vote?
Well, normally, we do ask for a letter of interest and a resume. Some provide it, some don't. And like I said, his was basically a two-sentence note, which you'll actually receive in your delivery Friday. But I have it here. Councilwoman Halaho, if you would like to see it. Oh, you do? It was in your folders, I forgot.
But it doesn't really say much.
Putting this gentleman in more than, you know, four months. But I just want us to be prepared that now you're, you're alternating, alternating the way that we make appointments. That's all I'm saying. So whatever the pleasure this body is.
Well, actually, I, I think it's been kind of done both ways, depending on the pleasure of council at any ti, at any particular point in time, which is not great in terms of consistency. But I don't know, Mr. Solicitor, I kind of think they could go either way on this. What is, is there, is there any legal concern over one way or the other?
Everyone's correct, anyway. Nancy's correct. The terms are three years, but we, you can make a new term because there's no requirement. So if you want to appoint this person to a new term for three years, you can do that. Or you can appoint him to finish up a term. It's totally up to council how they want to do it. If you want to have him for three years, you have to make this a new term. That's what you have to do. As far as I'm concerned, Dan, Dan is willing to do this to help the community. He's got no, uh, he doesn't have his heart set on serving on this for three years. So if Nancy and others believe that it should just be the balance of the term, let's do it for the balance of the term and just be done with it, then we can worry about another alternate or permanent member in February.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
At the path of least resistance?
Okay with.
Seems to be.
I, I, I like the process.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
I don't know what I'm supposed to be okay with.
But, um, yes, you may like the process, but the process isn't written in stone, and we can do it either way.
But this is the path of least resistance. So let's go ahead with this. What is the expiration date of the term, Mr. Manager?
It's 2/17.
Well, if you're appointing to fill the remainder of the unexpired term, it would be February 17 of 2021. If you're, if you're appointing them for, for a new three-year term beginning tonight, it would be three years from tonight's date.
You know, I don't really still have any information on, on this gentleman. I'm, I'm sure he's fine, but can we table the motion until he sends in something about his background?
I second the table. I'd like to, at least the opportunity to reach out to him and say hello and introduce myself and ask him a couple of questions.
I don't know what any of that conversation was. Do I, do we know?
It was a motion to table. So we have a motion to table. So we have to vote on the table first.
And if we table, that means we won't have an alternate in place for the October 5th zoning board here. And whenever I know that. And I would, I would argue, I understand that you'd like to see his credentials. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the letter. I don't know what the requirements are. But understand, by tabling, defeating the whole reason why I brought it up over why I was, I've been advocating to get this spot filled. And, you know, I can, if you don't want to vote for it, fine. But tabling it, might as well just take it off the agenda and be done with it. And we'll take our chances in October. And if we have to, if we have to go a member short, so be it. But tabling doesn't go.
We're not supposed to have any discussion once it's tabled. We didn't vote on that yet, right? So my question is, we have spent, we've spent an exorbitant amount of money on this particular B and B issue. And since this is what's coming up next month, I think it's important that we actually have the proper representation. And I certainly wouldn't want anything to go awry if we don't have someone there to support, you know, getting rid of this. So just keep that in mind, uh, just keep that in mind when you vote to table.
All right.
And right now, can I say, right now, the consideration is still filling in the-
To table takes precedent.
Right. I need a, right, everybody keeps talking over me.
What's there a second?
We have a motion to table. The discussion should have stopped, okay?
I was looking for the second. Sorry.
Roll call, please, on the, on the motion to table. Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that no?
Yes.
Yes.
She voted yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. Mr. Parker? Uh, no to table. Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No to table.
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the table fit, the table failed, so we're back to the original motion.
Which was still two different motions offered. So is the motion to, to fill the slot, the alternate slot of the zoning board until 2/17/21 with the Mr. Daniel Morganti? Morganti? Morganti. So was that, is that the motion?
I'm going to rerate it. Give me one sec. All right. So we have a, a call for a motion to appoint Daniel Morganti as an alternate member of the zoning hearing board, whose term will expire on 2/17/2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we need any further discussion?
This is Mr. Bowers. I have a couple of comments.
Sure, Mr. Bowers, go ahead.
Mr. Paul, you mentioned this is a neighbor of yours.
Correct.
And you also mentioned that one of our zoning hearing board members may, I guess, be pulled off or recuse himself, I'm guessing?
I'm sorry, Justin?
You mentioned that one of the zoning hearing people may, may not be voting on this?
That's correct. The issue, the issue is that, that one of the zoning hearing board members is one of, one of Mr. Augustine's next-door neighbors to be on, and that might be the basis on which Mr. Augustine's counsel may object to him serving on the, on the board. Simple as that. And we want to be prepared that if that happens, we'd like to have an alternate. And I, I apologize that Mr. Morganti didn't submit a resume, and I'm sorry that all this was done at the last minute. But this is the kind of, this is, this is what I, best I could pull together, working with the Borough Manager, working with our outside counsel, all that. I'm sorry that we didn't get it done ahead of time. But this is, I really wanted to get this approved tonight. If you, if you have reservations about disqualifications, so be it. But this is the best we could do on this, on this timetable.
Okay. My only other comment was, I've met Dan. I know Dan not well. I met him a few years ago when knocking on doors. And I specifically remember him and his wife. I think he'd be a good fit. But up until you said that he worked on your campaign, I was going to vote for him. But it just sounds like it's a, a political payback here, and you're not going to get my vote, unfortunately.
We're working my campaign just to vouch for him. I get no political mileage out of this. God help me. But if that's your concern, then vote no. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. I'm really trying to help this guy. I'm, I'm, we're trying to resolve this matter. It's been a matter that's been plaguing my neighborhood for two years. Yeah, Morganti, I, I probably wouldn't even be able to pick him out of the lineup, to be honest with you. Yeah, Morganti, I probably wouldn't even be able to pick him out of the lineup, to be honest with you. But, but, but he's a, he's a good, he's a good citizen. His wife is on some not-for-profit boards with me. These are good, upstanding people. I just want to do the right thing. So I don't know what else to say.
If I may, I, thanks, Mr. Paul, first of all, because I know what you're trying to do here is, is an honest effort to move this along, so I do, I do appreciate you for that. My only concern isn't, my concern isn't his qualifications so much as the, and you've already apologized for this, I'm not looking for an apology, is just the timing here where I'm literally being offered information, and I'm not being offered the ability to even reach out and say hello to this guy, and, and find out who he is, and why he even intends or wants to be on the board as an alternate. For me to go back to my voters and say, oh, yeah, I voted for a guy, and I put him in place. I have no idea who he was. I had no opportunity to question him at all. Just is, is a hard sale for me. And it's, you know, the things that I vote on, I have to do. I have to be able to sleep at night, and I can't, with, in good conscience, just vote for somebody that I didn't even have the opportunity. And I can only imagine, if I brought any issue to this council and offered you guys absolutely zero ability to have a question put towards it, it would be a laughingstock. So I have to look at, at how it's handled across the boards, and, and understand that, I just, I'm asking you to understand that this isn't a shot against you. This isn't a shot against him. This is really me saying, hey, I needed at least a couple more days on this thing to be able to reach out to the person and make that conversation happen. But thank you for what you're doing.
Mr. Parker, can I respond to that? Look, Mr. Yeager, Mr. Bowers, Ms. Holahol, I understand you're trying to do it by the book, and I'm a by-the-book guy. I'm, you know, I believe in the rule of law, God knows. And, yeah, am I trying to get this, am I cutting a few corners to try to get this done on a timely basis? Yes. But I totally understand that we should do it by, by procedure. I'm sorry that I didn't get more support from the borough in getting this thing done faster. But I've, I've been trying to pull this, I've been trying to do everything I can to try to get this thing resolved. And we have, this thing has been dragging on forever. You hear the frustration in my voice. That's nothing compared to the frustration in my neighborhood. I'm sorry that I brought somebody in from my neighborhood to fill the slot, but I did the best I could. But you're right, if you want to vote no, I fully understand. I won't take it personally, but just recognize that this is going to be, this, it's just another, another setback for, for my neighborhood, and, and as simple as that. I understand. I'd probably take the same position that you guys do, in, in, in holding, in believing that it's important to maintain the propriety of the procedure. And God knows, I've even said it on my, my doorknob hangers, that procedure is more, is often more important than the ethical substance. So I get it. But this was, this was a tough situation, under extenuating circumstances, but I'll take my lumps, and I, and I get it. So...
Mr. Parker, may I comment, please?
Yes.
I understand where Mike's coming from, but I also believe that there comes a time when you can put some faith in, even though it's a small amount of knowledge, but put some faith into some of your coworkers, some of your, you know, co-councils. And as, as Justin pointed out, he felt, he was, seemed like a nice, nice, nice enough guy, nice couple, but it wasn't until he found out that it was somewhat political, which is really, you know, is the stickler here, then all of a sudden, he doesn't want to vote on him, for him. And I, and I get that. But this is why we are where we are. And the other thing is, this is not, this is not new. This has been advertised, as Mr. Mitchell said, at least, I was, he said all year, it probably has been all year, that we had this position open. And I don't know about everybody else on council, but I've asked a number of people about serving, and they're just not interested. People just don't want to get involved in it anymore. So when you find someone that is interested, that, that has no record, that they're decent human beings, and you have a few people to vouch for them, I just don't, I just don't understand the trepidation. Sometimes there has to be a little bit of, I call it blind trust, I guess.
I might be adding fuel to the fire, but I can tell you, this has been advertised at least six months this year so far, and there's no one clamoring to serve in this alternate member position, just so you know.
Any people I've asked said no, so...
This is for six months, right, Nancy? That's what you're saying?
I said, yeah, at least...
This only is a six-month appointment. I want to make sure I got, okay.
Oh, uh, well, five months.
This appointment would end 2/17/21.
Five months.
I'm sorry. Okay, my math is off. Sorry.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't even know if this gentleman wants to serve after February, you know?
Don't know anything about him. You don't know anything.
Okay, so I say my piece.
Anyone else? All right, I want to do a roll call. It's a roll call, please.
May I just confirm, the first was Mrs. Sherlock, and the second was Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Holahol?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
No.
Good. Motion doesn't pass.
That was three to four, right?
Yes.
Three, okay.
All right, we are up to motion...
So, I'm sorry, Mr. President, before we leave 9K, would council like us to reach out to this gentleman for more information about him, like a resume or not?
I personally don't need that. I'll reach out to him on my own and say hello.
Yeah, I'd like to see his resume, so I can, or...
We will reach out to him and ask for more information. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we can vote for him next month, once we have everything. But I agree with Mike. We can't just pass people without knowing who they are.
Okay, 9, 9L, call for a motion to authorize conflict councils serving as borough solicitor to intervene on the borough's behalf in opposition to the zoning hearing board application of Gene Augustine, 874 North Pennsylvania Avenue, Marsville, PA 19067, scheduled to be heard on Monday, October 5th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Extentions. Motion passes. 10, other business. Do we have any other business? All right, hearing none. 11, borough officials. Anybody wish to discuss anything, add anything?
I have something, um...
I have some other questions, but I think I'm going to address them at the, the finance meeting, which is this week, right? Or next week, the 30th? Helen, can you confirm that?
I don't know what you said.
The finance meeting?
I believe it's Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, okay.
All right, did anybody else want to speak under borough officials?
Yeah, I, I'd like to say something. So Scott Mitchell and I, this is for the residents in the First Ward, we had a meeting with the Falls Supervisors, and it went very well in terms of they're going to work with us to try to detour the trucks away from Pennsylvania Avenue in the First Ward, and have them go down toward Tyburn. They're also going to be working with PennDOT on our behalf in order to try and get the trucks to stay off of South Pennsylvania Avenue. So everything there seems to be progressing nicely. Right, Scott?
If I could just clarify, the meeting was with a developer proposing a development project in Falls Township. We didn't meet with the Falls Township Supervisors.
Wasn't that one guy from the, from Falls? I thought he was.
No.
Oh, oh, my bad.
That's all right.
Thought that's how he identified himself. It's hard to hear his calls.
He may have been as an officer, but he wasn't a supervisor.
Okay, all right. So hopefully, everything will progress nicely there, so we're very excited about that. Or at least I am.
Yeah, and I think the latest update to that development project, there was a letter included in your delivery last week, so you know the current status of that.
I have something. I received a letter in the mail today, and my neighbor received one, so I guess it was targeted to residents in the Second Ward near me. In addition to the party house, the zoning board's also going to be looking at the Curtin Heathrow Building on October 5th. There's a plan for, for them to change some of the...
Scott, Mike, Scott, I don't know what you said.
Say again?
I don't know what you said.
Okay.
You received a letter, you received a letter about what?
About the, the Curtin Heathrow Building across the street. There's a proposal to turn it into garden apartments.
Oh, right, for apartments or something? Yeah.
Yeah. So that will be on the menu for October 5th in front of the zoning board. Scott, anything?
Anyone else?
About this or not?
About a letter? No, I have not seen a letter.
For the apartments? Just what we got in our package?
Yeah, just what's available from what was submitted to the zoning hearing board, which was available in your packets last week. I believe we have plans and drawings, or if you want to make an appointment, to come in and look at them, but they're preliminary at this point, so...
Pardon my, if, I look, if I, if I appear dumb asking this, but what's the difference between an apartment and a garden apartment?
If I, I can chime in there, when Robert Morris Apartments on Ridge Street...
Start half-underground.
Back in the 60s, they were garden apartments.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it means the first floor is half-underground.
Would a solicitor care to chime in on the difference between an apartment and a garden apartment? Or would you like me to attempt it?
Well, you can attempt it, and I'll, I'll comment. Go ahead, go ahead. Let me see what you're going to say.
A garden-style apartment usually has a slightly separate classification or designation than a traditional apartment, and it's usually a ground level, or sometimes sub-level. A portion of the unit is ground level and/or sub-level. That's usually what is considered a garden-style apartment.
Close to the garden. So do you know, Scott, I'd like to come in and look at those preliminary plans, but do, do they have a number attached to that? How many units they're expecting?
They do. I believe it was in the material we circulated last week, yeah.
Fourteen or something?
I think it was 19, but I, my memory is a little foggy. I would, I'd refer to the Friday delivery for exact, because I think it was in there.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. President, this is Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
In somewhat of an unorthodox way, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bill Arison as an alternative for the zoning hearing board for the remainder of the term that's open.
Where is this coming from?
So someone that we don't even have a two-sentence note on?
Is that real?
There's no second, though.
Oh. Well, just, just like with Mr. Morganti, we don't have a letter of interest. We don't have any kind of background.
Bill Arison.
I love Bill. The answer's no. Well, you got to go through the process.
Was there a first and a second?
Well, there, a motion's been made, I'd yield to the president, but I'm, I'm hearing a lack of a second.
I haven't heard a second, so without a second, it's not a first and a second consideration.
I don't hear a second, so... We're going to move on to 12, which is a motion for adjournment. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. President, oh, sorry, go ahead.
904, aye.
Any objections? All right, meetings adjourned.
We have executive session, don't we?
Yes, we, if we could take a short, five-minute break just to allow people to use the facilities, and if we could readjust the room accordingly for our executive session.
Excuse me, I know that we officially adjourned, but I have a quick question. I forgot to bring up Halloween. Are we, do we have any direction? Is any, are we still, are they doing Halloween? Does anybody know? Any thoughts?
I have not heard one way or the other. We typically put the Halloween motion on your October agenda.
Right.
Do you want to, do you, do you want to fence with Halloween?
I see, unless the county turns it down, we should just let it go and keep it out, or Trick or Treat does need it.
Terry, Terry, can you stop our recording and broadcast?